Morning. I have a call. Steve Collins. That's good.
Yeah, we just. Yeah. 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 I heard you said that.
Some.
What little?
Things.
I called meeting to order. If you would begin with our invocation.
Heavenly Father, I want to thank you right now for Dalton Township and all of the people that reside in this residency. Father God, we're asking for your truth to be just elevated elevated in this space tonight, God, that you appoint each and every person and you pull down the ones that you don't want in. So, God, I thank you that you lead us as trustees, as the board of Dalton Township to make proper decisions. God, I thank you for all of the things that are being brought forward, Lord God, and I just I just thank you for your hand being the promise and having your way in our lives tonight in Jesus' name.
Next, we have a public agents if you would like.
Pleasure weekends to you, the United States of America and the United Republic, the which is meant one nation. With the civil, the religion and justice for all.
There are some seats up here in the front, Melinda. We're overflowing a little bit. Which I appreciate it, all the people showing up, so important decisions to be made. Tracy, if you would start us with a vote call.
Noah, yes.
Christine.
Here.
Jeffrey.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Tracy, here.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda. If anyone would like to make a motion.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, agenda.
Do it as sport. Word by Lee, motion by Noah, and discussion among the board. Thirty-nine, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Next, we have approval of past meeting minutes.
Make motion to approve. Last three minutes.
Motion by Noah. Word by Christie, and discussion among the board. Thirty-nine, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Next, we have the Treasury report. Does the board have any questions, thoughts, ideas, comments, concerns on the Treasury report?
Amazing what the interest you have again. Thank you.
Put that on file. Next, we have paying the bills. Who has the most to pay the bills?
Make the motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Noah, do we have support? Word by Christie, and a discussion among the board. Thirty-nine, roll call vote.
Noah, yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Tracy, yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the Fire Department report, if you would choose.
Thanks, sir. Increasing calls last month again, obviously, with the summer months, that's what happens for us. Uh, next big thing, it's uh, it's on everybody's mind. Some for and some against, but it's what it is. The thing is to say that the village request uh, asked, we're quite excited about the upcoming future. It's been time, and those who remember, last thirteen thirteen years ago, I said within fifteen years, we need to be full time because of the status of our employees, the way it works, and boy, we were just about out of time. I'd say they're better than everybody, but this is what we need to do. Citizens don't understand it, and I wish more would have reached out, uh, asked, because you've become a subject matter expert on it, and unfortunately, it was easier to cast stones than it was to ask. Again, it is what it is. Very happy that uh, this direction is again, it's for the citizens. It's not for me, it's not for the employees. To do this for the citizens, you know, if people can get that through their heads, they'll understand that we're there for them at three o'clock in the morning and on SAG base. Unfortunately, if some of you may have already heard, a dear friend of ours from the law enforcement side was shot eight times last night in Stevens County.
No.
Yeah. Yes, 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 yes. Thankfully, he's alive. But there were fire and EMS responders right there with him. So for the, for the, I'm sorry, I'm a little passionate about it, but the worst case scenario, the extra hundred and twenty dollars, take a bullet for you, that's, I don't know.
That's worth it, right?
Yeah, I mean, spending a, spending a thirty-six bucks or sixty bucks and asking for a year, that's, that's a dollar a day. How long do you dollar, I mean, honestly? It's kind of hard for me, but it is what it is. Again, the officer's doing well, most of you have seen him here, um, hanging out with our group and working together with us, and I talked to him today, he's, he's shook up, but he's, but he's, he's, he's here, and, and the bad guy is, so that's all that matters.
Ooh.
We did receive those notices in the holes we asked for, budget, we already used them. They have really helped gain the traction we needed to be even faster at what we're doing. We have a large home in North Meskeem that we were able to assist with and, and should have, could have been really bad and with those tactics, it really made our lives a lot easier and a lot safer for the guys, so we appreciate that. The last thing is I have a request attached. Those of you that know, um, we cover twenty-four miles of the national forests, a motocross track. Uh, if you remember, those who've been around for years, remember, um, originally, that was an ORB track, which meant you could take anything out there that was smaller than a car. That's why we have the Ranger. Unfortunately, the United States Forest Service abolished that and knocked it down to just motorcycles, they've actually lessened it to less than fifty inches. If you've seen our Ranger, it's more than fifty inches, and, and we are unable, and I am literally unable to go down those trails. We've had two calls in the last month, we had to physically walk a mile to the victim, put them in a basket, and drag them by hand back. It's a research, there is an item out there called a Rocon Trail Breaker, that is basically a motorcycle, that has a trailer attached to it that will ease in the victim, move all victims, it's very small, very lightweight. To me, it makes nothing but sense, there is a department in Lake County that has one, we went up and talked with them, demoed them. I'm going to submit a request for fifteen thousand in ARPA money to use for the benefit of this purchase, to make it easier for our staff and those citizens. Again, we've been out there twice in the last month, and both I mean, physically could not get to the victim except by, by foot. And both of them were rather serious injuries. We go out there on average about nine times a year, doesn't seem like a lot, but there have been other times we've been requested, especially to Meskeem, County, Lake County area, Sherpa Bowl, Bay Harbor, that big tanking, those were all walking trails, uh, and none of the ORBs can get there, this would be the only one south of Big Prairie that, that would have this ability, so with your blessing, I would like to ask for fifteen thousand in ARPA, I know it will come in less than that, I have included in your packet, uh, a breakdown of the motorcycle itself, the trailer, um, the hitch we have to put on it, and um, some things called brush guards, that basically so we don't break our knuckles while we're driving. Other than that, if you have any questions for me or the citizens, please ask, and I'll be happy to answer.
So that up to the fifteen thousand, does that include all those little extras?
No, that stuff, and it's actually probably going to come in less than that, because we're going to actually go pick it up, not have it delivered, we'll actually go pick it up.
That's so cool.
There won't be a corner.
This prefers a little bit of cushion. So on this, it'll essentially be voted on twice, because we've been doing the resolutions for the ARPA later, but this is a specific vote for this at this time. So we're looking for a motion.
Oh, I move to approve the use of up to fifteen thousand in ARPA funds to purchase a Rocon Trail Breaker and associated accessories motion.
Motion by Noah, support, by Tracy, and a discussion among the board. Thirty-nine, roll call vote.
Noah, yes.
Tracy, yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the planning commissioner report, if you would leave.
Um, that's July twenty-fifth. My first item is one of the items we talked about, the child group, child care group homes, it's just to lessen the restrictions that were on it originally. Um, the second thing we have is actually on the next decision item on our list is a zoning change for seven forty-three West Tyler, rezoned from C two to R one. Um, home was recently purchased and the app note, um, describes more hoops were involved for purchasing C two for residential home. Um, and the group, there was a group of homes that changed to R one back in two thousand nineteen, um, that property owner did not at the time, so a motion approved. Um, and the last was a site plan review for uh, twenty-nine ninety-nine White Hall Road, right next to the BP. Um, owner of McMillan, White Hall Road, um, partisan hands and home care, site plan reviewed for additional sidewalk and decking and a ramp, handicap accessible ramp for their business.
Perfect, thank you. Next, we have the zoning board appeals report, if you would tell us.
Um, zoning board meeting eight seven two-nine twenty-three, Nick Kunin motion to accept minutes of last meeting was found here as being corrected. Um, Marvin Nash abstained from the vote as he was absent from the five twenty-two twenty-three meeting. Before the CBA was CBA twenty-three dash zero seven at six four three Lake Road. Matt Ambrose owner was present, he stated that he desired to foreput variance in height of the home so that he can entertain extended family members while they would come for visits while at the lake. The height would not affect any views of the lakes as he is boarding both lakes, middle and Twin Lake. When the unique layout of the topography was integral in the decision to approve the variance, David Glick motion to approve. CBA twenty-three dash zero seven, Noah seconded the motion, Nick Kunin abstaining as family related, motion passed all in favor. We adjourned at six forty-five.
Thank you. Next, we have the maintenance and grounds report, if you would say.
Difficult summer month for maintenance, uh, we did get the new truck fitted with brand new Boss B blade, uh, new boss, boss salt spreader, light rack. It's all what I wanted, we got what we needed, so it'll, it'll be a way better winter on, on the vehicle and me. Um, all's on its way, we're taking care of, trying to get all of our equipment ready for leaves, because that's the name of the game, it's a lot of leaves, especially at the cemeteries. Catalpa Park, we're working on Catalpa Park right now, trying to get the boat launch completely redone with a new drainage system and new resurfacing, something we're going to do hopefully to all of the boat launches other than Twin Lake. Uh, this is kind of the test one to make sure we don't step on anybody's toes and make sure everything goes well. Um, and then the Twin Lake sign in here, I said it should be done in the near future, this Friday, Thursday, or Friday, the company will be out to put in the new foundation and stone. So we're probably looking at the end of next week, new Twin Lake sign will be in and done.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, we are coming up to our first public comment, there's a decent amount in this meeting, and one of the big things, probably the biggest thing, is the replacement of the trustees, for the new trustees. We now have eight people that have put in for that, I'm expecting most of them, maybe all of them, to speak on that, and so we can do that speaking portion when we come to that in the agenda. Um, I will time them for three minutes, so, so that everything stays, stays moving. Um, but right now, we have other things on the docket as well, if anyone wants to speak on those, the group child care homes, I know people are here for that, the zone changes, the weed special assessments, the road special assessments, ARPA fund, Middle Lake, um, road land proposal, or the FOIA appeal if anyone, or the CPL resolution at the end. If anyone wants to speak on any of those things, feel free to come up to lecture and let us know who you are, I will turn on the timer for three minutes.
Traveling Wednesday, two seven nine five, Middle Lake Road. I'm here for, you know, the, you know, the proposal on the Middle Lake Road land, um, and I know tonight you're going to be setting by the minimum bid amount. I just would like to um, remind the board that, and I spoke on this before, that um, that little strip of property next to us has been, I don't know how long the township has actually owned it, but we've been there for eleven years, and we're the ones that have mowed the grass, raked the leaves, and recently had to trim trees that cost us nine hundred dollars, they got stumped because it was in the way of when we mowed. And uh, over the years, I've never had, I think we've been through four supervisors since we've been here, and we've never had the township one time stop and say, hey, do you need us to mow that grass? You know, and we've always taken care of it, but as usual, you know, when you have property over time, you know, it needs to be maintained, and nobody's ever maintained it other than us. So I would hope that, you know, you guys might take that into consideration, uh, we've already done considerable, considerable amount of money and work into that property, and you know, I just think that it would be really great if you could find a way to uh, maybe cut us some slack on what you feel it's really worth. It's, there is no late frontage to it, you know, it's just small, a tiny piece. We have to take care of it, so I'm, you still own it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, yeah, come on up.
Bill, Eric Hurst, twenty-five ninety Johnson Road, I see you're going to put ours up for a special assessment again, which is fine, but at least I hope this year you do something about it, and use our money wisely, because you haven't spent a dime on that road. Up to this date, we've had that road graded twice, never saw Brian, you're supposed to get Brian at least once a year. We never saw it once. So where is our money going to, and I know this assessment is probably going to go up again, and what are we getting for it? You don't plow it in the winter time, I could probably count three times last winter that it got plowed, and me and the neighbors down the road, they take care of this road. So again, what do you guys do with our money? That's all I ask, what do you do with it? That's it. It's horrible. All I got to say about that road.
Anyone else sign, anything else other than the people that are going for the trustee position? If someone else wants to speak about the trustee position, that's not one of the candidates, one of the candidates, feel free to speak on that now too. Move on to our decision items. Our first decision item, ordering twenty-twenty-three dash zero nine for group child care homes, which we've heard about in the planning commission minutes. This is to expand the use, make it a little easier, more available.
I make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero nine for group child care homes.
Motion by Noah, do we have support? Word by Lee, and a discussion among the board. Thirty-nine, roll call vote.
Noah, yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Christine, yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Tracy, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have ordering twenty-twenty-three dash ten for the zoning change on Tyler Road, also heard about this in the planning commission meeting minutes. Motion on this.
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty, twenty-nine ten for rezoning.
Word. Motion by Lee, support by Tracy, and discussion among the board. Thirty-nine, roll call vote.
Lee.
Yes.
Tracy, yes.
Noah, yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-six for Twin Lakes Weed Special Assessment. And so some of the funds, uh, in, in these for the lake treatments, we want some cushion. We also don't need it to be extremely high, because it can't be used for anything else, can't be used for boat launches, it can't be used for stocking fish, those are things that have been asked about it, it can only be used for treating weeds. And in these, Twin Lakes wrote up as a lesser amount than it was scheduled for, and which, so the board can adjust from a year-to-year basis and other ones as well, but Twin Lakes have written up here and, and it's fifty dollars per parcel.
Well, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three twenty-six for weed treatment on Twin Lake.
Motion by Noah, do we have support? Word by Christie, and a discussion among the board. Thirty-nine, roll call vote.
Noah, yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Tracy, yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passes. The next three are the same type of thing, but written up for, for zero dollars. Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seven for North Lake Weed Special Assessment. Make a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-seven for weed treatment on North Lake.
Word. Word. By Tracy, motion by Noah, any discussion among the board? Thirty-nine, roll call vote.
Noah, yes.
Tracy, yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-eight for West Lake. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-eight for weed treatment on West Lake.
Motion by Noah, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Tracy, and discussion among the board. Thirty-nine, roll call vote.
Noah, yes.
Tracy, yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-nine for Middle Lake.
Yep, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-nine for weed treatment on Middle Lake.
Motion by Noah, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Tracy, and a discussion among the board.
I think that's awesome.
Down.
Roll call vote.
Noah, yes.
Tracy, yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, is resolution twenty-twenty-three dash thirty for Cat and Brock, that's one of two, the other one being Johnston, that we have private roads that we assess, then we pay the money to the County Road Commission um, to maintain those, we've had issues with them for a long time, as long as I know about them existing. Um, they're not great things to have in place, uh, this one's for the Cat and Brock, but if you're having issues on Johnston, let me know, I talk to the Road Commission almost every day, um, probably five, about five days a week on average. And with, for all of the different roads, um, but if you message me on that type of stuff, then I let them know, um, and in this case, on these, these ones, um, I basically have to request that they lay some new material down, and that sort of thing, um, which I have done on them at times. This one is twenty-twenty-three dash thirty for Cat and Brock.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-two dash thirty for maintenance on Cat and Brock.
Motion by Noah, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Tracy, and a discussion among the board. Thirty-nine. And these were, the numbers that are wrote up in here were the ones that were scheduled for when the special assessment was put in place, so these weren't adjusted from the schedule. Roll call vote.
Noah, yes.
Tracy, yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have resolution twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-one for Johnston. Same thing, just different road.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-one, make that sign Johnston.
I believe, yes.
Is there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ooh, I didn't replace one of the Cat Brax, alright, yep, you're right, so you should correct that, um, so you're making the motion.
I'm making the motion providing the collection is made to Johnston Road.
Yep. Perfect, now Johnston listed in it elsewhere, but not in the one spot, yeah.
Over here.
Alright. Motion by Noah, support by Tracy, and any discussion among the board.
Isn't it true too that if you live on a road like that, that they can, you can call into the Meskeem County Road Commission to complain, and you might get a little more help? It's the only time it ever gets graded, it's the only time, well, then, I hate to say it, but like, yeah, our hands are tied too.
Right, so you can call the Road Commission directly, um, but especially if they're, if they're not being responsive, then you can call or email me, and then I just reach out to them too, it's a very similar process. I don't know that I necessarily get a better response on those types of things than the citizens, uh, kind of, kind of hard to tell, it depends on when they get to it, but but either way.
Yeah, they need to go accountable.
Alright, roll call votes.
Noah, yes.
Tracy, yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Christine. Lee.
Motion passes. Next, we have resolution twenty-three dash twenty-five for ARPA fund expenditures, and this has two things, the one is the Rocon, uh, trail equipment for the fire department. The other one is listing that if any funds aren't allocated within time, in twenty twenty-four, they have to be set by twenty twenty-six, if they aren't allocated towards something else, we can still in the future allocate them, but if they're not, then they can at least be applied to roads over that time, right? So I mean, I won't be in office, but I don't want to stick the next board with not having something allocated, nor attempting to refund it to the state, right? Could get.
Yeah, that could get bad, so. I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-five for ARPA fund expenditures.
Motion by Noah, do we have support?
Support.
Support by Tracy, any discussion among the board? Thirty-nine, roll call vote.
Noah, yes.
Tracy, yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have landfill proposal on Middle Lake Road, clear public comments on this, and it is true, and I've never asked if you guys wanted us to mow that, and I don't know about previous supervisors, but I very much believe it. Uh, it is true also that they have done some work on the trees and things on this piece of property, it is an odd little piece. It's also surprising that the Realtor and the true cash value from the assessor came back at, at the same amount, I think that's the first time that's happened. Um, but that is, everyone knows the situation with it. And we're looking at putting a, a minimum bid on it, and it, the minimum bid is up to the board, but when we open bids next month, then we have to stick by our own minimum, whatever that is determined as of now.
Such a hard dollar, part of me wants to say sell it to him for one dollar, but this is like the beginning of it, that's my heart, my heart would be like, they've been taking care of it, they've taken trees out, that's a lot of, that's a lot of time, a lot of investment, and it's probably great items.
It's a special case, it's a special case, uh, you know, I, in general, I I'm not a huge discount person, um.
I am. Sorry.
So, but, I mean, in this case, since they have, they have been maintaining it to a certain extent, I, I would, I think it's reasonable if it went for less, if it went for half of what's proposed here, which is a five hundred dollar difference.
What page of your agenda is that about on?
Uh, I don't have the page numbers listed on that.
Can you say?
But it is item number twenty-two.
Melinda, it's halfway through.
I got it online. Thank you. Jesse filled me in, I'm good. Your rest of the public might want to know.
I make a motion to put the partial on the lake line up for a bit of a, minimum of five hundred, ask for.
Alright, a motion for five hundred by Noah, support by Christie, any other discussion among the board? Thirty-nine, roll call vote.
Noah, yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Tracy, yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have our two trustee appointments, I believe these should be separate motions, and we have eight people that have applied for it in the packet, they're posted online, there are five letters. Received one letter, Scott Christmas was waiting for permission from his company over the weekend, I've given that to the board, and I received two more letters today from William Scott and Chris Gunn, and Chris Gunn had attempted to email me, but the email never came through, and I checked right before the screening, and I, I didn't have one on that day. Uh, I printed those off and given those to the board as well. I wanted to allow any of the eight candidates that want a chance to speak and address the board for the decision, obviously a decently important decision, for the township to do that at this time. And if you would like to come up, say your name, let us know who you are, I will start the timer for three minutes again. Go ahead and make your case. If someone wanted to declare for one of the trustee positions now, they can speak on their.
Call the names, Emily, or you say three names?
Yeah, those are the three that weren't included in the packet, and so the other.
Three to the packet, I, I didn't see that at all.
It's, it's in the packet, so there's Tammy Verhoven has a letter, Chris Hall has a letter.
Oh, no.
Michael Bennett has a letter. Julie Stewart has a letter. And Eric Rideout has a letter. And then the next three, three I listed that are not in the packet align, because they came in after Wednesday.
Apparently in the wrong packet.
Oh, I made a reference, thank you.
There's a reference packet, but that's all financial stuff?
No.
I was in the reference packet, I mean, the board packet, not in the reference packet, thank you, Jesse again.
You want to be in the board packet. Yeah, and so if you want to come up and speak to.
Chris Hall, twenty-three sixty Middle Lake Road. I started at Dalton Township in nineteen ninety-seven, building inspectors, did the ordinance zoning, it's horrible, worth it still, it was, but and I went on to work in the planning commi, being in the planning commission from two thousand five to two thousand Z, and from two thousand native became supervisor to two thousand fifteen, that's twenty-six years of township government here, I think I've got a little bit of history. Now it's worked well with the people. Guess my resume will show that I have got skills to be a trustee for the township. One quick note, if there's any questions for you guys, that, make sure that property sale that has an easement for the drain, the rag drain.
I checked with the drain commissioner.
Just make sure that there's some portage in there for that, so. Alright.
A Democrat or Republican?
Uh, it's a thousand four will be, be on the mail.
It's a, it's a, it's, it's a partisan position when it's a Republican, it's totally relative.
Okay, hey, public, public comments needs to be structured, otherwise we're probably going to end up like some sort of fistfight in the audience. So we'll, we'll attempt to avoid that.
The reason that I'm questioning that is because the township voted all Republicans when we got into office, and that's why I'm asking, and I think I have every right to ask that as a trustee.
Position, absolutely.
Alright, so that's one. Two, number two. Good evening, board. Christie's in the back.
Christopher's in the back, right? From the back, well, um, I just want to express my, um, my interest in the trustee position, and I'd have been a resident of the township for close to 20 years. Scott Christmas is the name. Heard all the jokes, so we don't need to go there, but I'm, I'm fond of love with this township. I have a horse hobby farm right around the corner on Staple Road, been there again almost 20 years. Diver, observe the leaders navigate through some, some troubled water from time to time, and honestly, you guys have done that really, really well. I just want to commit, take a moment to commend you on that. I also think that the leadership board embodies my values. And I hope to exude those same values through well-informed decisions, financially responsible, responding to the needs of our community through clear and transparent communication. I think you do a great job in the communication industry. I'm currently a leader of Fortune 50 company here in the county Comcast cable company. And that's the reason for my tardiness. I had to get the blessing from my company to be on the board. With that said, if any conversations happen to come up between Comcast and the township, I am going to need to recuse myself for that being in management there. So I wanted to be transparent about that too, so. Certainly, my faith in God and his gift of freedom to us personally, along with the inspired foundational documents of this great country has kind of been my, my lighthouse in the foggy world that we certainly live in today. I believe the rules are the rules, and if the rule, the answer is no to those, then that's the answer. If we all feel the rules need to change, well, then that's where we need, we need to go with that. I believe we all hold a seat at the table. With that said, our diversity certainly will help us lead us to the best possible decision. We need to be financially sound. I'm a big aftercare cost guy. We might be able to buy it, but we'll be able to take care of it. If you need an example of that, the Turtle Fence is a great example of that down on the River Flats. That's probably cost us three times over what it originally cost us. So that's what most of my life observed, serving others, whether it's in church or my customers at work. It's with this servant's heart that I asked you for your role to be placed on the board trustees here tonight, so thank you.
Scott, that's two. You know there's more out there if anyone wants to speak?
Tell me, that's perfect.
Well, my name's Michael Bennett, and compared to the two that have already been to speak, I'm basically a newbie. Been a resident of Dalton Township for six years. 20 years in law enforcement, so I've done some public service that way. My, really my experience is when we came in to negotiate the Central Road paving project, and so saw how the operations worked and learned some stuff there. And was recommended by former members of the board that this might be a good fit, so. I guess, other than that, do you have any questions?
I don't ask Republican, Democrat, last guy, but I can tell by the way he's.
Independent. I vote for the person.
Okay, okay.
Done that my whole life.
Okay.
There's good people on both sides, so. Any other questions? I don't have any. I appreciate the time. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Julie Stewart, 2518 Johnston Avenue. The road. I am super interested in this position and honored to have applied for it. I've been a member of the community for 42 years. Very active in my church. I've started in the director of a food pantry in the community. I have a small business, serving senior citizens in the community. Gosh, it belonged to a tomb like United Methodist, formerly United Methodist Community Church. And just kind of ready to start navigating some new waters. I'd really love to help out in the township and possibly make it even a better place to live with making good, sound decisions, mission-based. Pretty much, pretty much me in a nutshell. Any questions?
I really.
Excellent, thank you.
Well. We voted for a reason. I wish that's as many people when I was recruited.
Yes, we ended up with a good turnout, which is very good. I had that little involvement in it.
My name's William Scott. I was one of the turn in the class today. Just found out about it talking to Jeff through the day, so. And I was Facebook friends with the, with the Knights, so I saw their movement and realized it would be open. I have a lifetime of service to fellow citizens of America. First of all, I'm a conservative. I'm a Second Amendment believer.
There we go.
Okay.
There we go.
Right out of high school, I joined the army, and unfortunately, it was not a good time to be in the military. And I was injured and I, I'm a disabled veteran. I floundered for a little bit after the military, kind of fighting myself, ended up going to work for the post office. Retired from the post office after 33 years. While at the post office, I didn't like the way we were sometimes treated, so I became, I've been my union. Got a union steward and a local officer, lobbyist, local officer in our local. And then I switched sides after about 15 years of that, went to labor relations, and was actually in a position to better help the people in the union because I was put in charge of negotiating high-dollar settlements on grievances and traveled to some United States doing that. Most recently, I was a white officer, code compliance officer for a township now by Battle Creek. After doing that for about two and a half years, I decided I didn't like the way the township was being run, so I ran for supervisor, so I liked supervising. So I, I've negotiated high-dollar contracts for police, negotiated maintenance contracts. I've been in charge of ARPA funds, know how they're going to be spent, not to be spent. Know the functions on the board, and I just ask, as far as personally, I own property in Dalton Township for about 15 years. I've lived here for about a year. A lot of township operate very similarly, so I'm familiar with it, but I'd like to be part of my community, and I ask for your consideration as a trustee.
Thank you for the service.
Thank you.
Yes?
My name is Chris Gunn. I live at 4750 Holton Road in Twin Lake, Michigan. I've been a resident since 1975, owned a business since 1975, been in retail, been in wholesale, have worked with local churches in the community, Boy Scouts of America. I've worked with Dalton Township on a number of occasions on a, different products. One thing I, I do know, I, I know the people of the community, and I do know what they want. I would represent them well. I think I would be their voice in the community to make sure that things got done, got done right, and got done on a fair, fair thing. I am a Christian, I am a Republican, and so I, um, been happy to live here for all teachers, and I think that what I bring is experience and a seasoned individual that can help make decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, you want to? No? And is Eric Rideout in the audience? No? Alright, I think he's the one. I don't know, but I think he's the only one that you don't see, and then it sounds like Tammy doesn't want to speak to him, but Tammy's letter was in the, in the public packet as well, so.
What's her last name?
For Verhoven.
And she's not.
She is here.
Oh, and she's the one to speak, okay.
Yeah, and so her information is included in the letter that she wanted in the packet. And then I think we're all good. I want to make sure I don't miss anyone to our trustee, right? If you want to be considered, that was the time. Actually, I think we have an excellent slate, a really, a really good pool. And there are several people that I like for the positions. Obviously, we can only have two. And how this goes, we need four people to show up from the board and double check the lawyer to make sure we're good, because we're a reduced board. We need four people to show up. Obviously, we have five people here, and it's a simple majority, so we need three people to vote for someone to go in. I prefer for the motions to be separate rather than stacked two on top of each other, just because I assume there will be some disagreement on, out of eight candidates, on which two should be there.
I'm going to make a motion for Scott Christmas to appoint as Dalton Township trustee. Support.
Motion by Noah, support by Chris, Christie for Scott Christmas. Is there any discussion among the board? This is the time because we have a roll call vote, a couple of seconds. Okay, roll call vote?
Noah?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Tracy, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. So, and Christie, we will roll out for the meeting if you would like to be sworn in, or you can range another time. So that, that is one, that is 50%. We're looking for another.
I will make a motion to appoint Michael Bennett as a Dalton Township trustee.
Motion for Michael Bennett, we have a support. Support by Christie. Any discussion among the board? I will say I liked your comments to try to calm everyone down and keep everyone in an even keel during the Central Road process because special assessments are no fun for anyone, so I appreciate that. Any other comments from the board? There are none, roll call vote?
Tracy, yes. Christie?
Yes.
Noah?
No.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Motion passes. Alright, welcome to a panel. And our two trustees, now you're going to be right into it, right? Politics is always happening. And then we have, the election will still be at the normally scheduled time in 2024, and so if you want a position, you'll be running again next year. Alright, next we have McCabe Foye Appeal. And we've had this before. They're set up as a hearing. And so I will open the hearing. And I will open the public comments in the hearing for the McCabe Foye Appeal. If anyone would like to make specific public comments on McCabe's Foye Appeal. I've included the emails that he sent me, along with documents he's requesting about fees for services from the township, all of which I pulled off the township website from links, so they're all publicly available already. If there's no public comment on the hearing on the McCabe Foye Appeal, I will close public comments. And we are up to making a decision on this. And so, and Tracy is officially the Foye Coordinator as the clerk. If she has anything different or special on it, be free to let us know. The reason I included so much in the packet, just so that no one can say that I am attempting to not give something away. It's a lot of information.
I make a motion that information on fees and services are attached to this publicly posted package and were obtained from the public website.
Motion by Noah. Support by Lee. Is there any discussion among the board? There are none, roll call vote?
Noah, yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Tracy, yes. Jeffrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Next we are on to our discussion items. We have a singular discussion item. It's on a CPL resolution. I've included in the board packet a section of the employee handbook on workplace violence, where it talks about if an employee has a CPL, that they can carry, they can't open carry, is what it states in here. They can carry with a CPL with permission from supervisor. Alright, it's not, very unlikely that it would. Deny anyone permission to carry with a CPL as a staff member. But I think it's reasonable to discuss potentially changing that so that it is just allowed and would be denied someone if there was some sort of issue. And this with ongoing safety concerns, obviously the remodel, there'll be glass put up in the front, so that will be a safety feature. There are some security cameras, limited, because there was controversy, of course, over that when I was putting those in. We have some alarms as well, and so overall, a decent number of safety measures. This is just one that could be involved, and Christie mentioned that they've been discussing it at treasurers' meetings and trainings as well. Any, any thoughts from the board on?
I like it. I mean, you know, obviously, we're, we're just coming into a time in our world where people are just, just getting whacked out. Bringing in guns and just opening fire, you know, and if, if good people don't have something to fight back with, a lot of innocent lives get taken, so I, I fully agree. But, you know, at least the supervisor knowing ahead of time who's carrying. Yeah, I, I just, I like that. Yeah, I think that's a safe, that's a more safer place to be involved with. Because like, like tonight, anybody out here can have a gun. Oh, here we are, you know? It's just, that's the world we're living in right now. And we've got.
You've set off on that.
We could do something like that. Acknowledging.
Yep, yep.
This being maintenance guy, the bike trail specifically, you're out in the middle of nowhere sometimes, and you never know. I've heard stories of bobcats and bears.
Oh, yeah, there's bears.
It's always nice to have a gun in any situation, so it's just, it's also for safety for sure, but it's also, in my opinion, God given right, so.
I want to have bear bait, so if you had a little gun, you'd get mad at you.
And it was, well, this was at one of your, one of your trainings, right? About reimbursing for someone getting a CPL of their staff member. I don't think, I don't think that's unreasonable. I also personally don't feel like it's necessarily important for the township. If someone wants to get it and do it, then, you know, I think that, I think that's fine. I'm more hesitant about the, about the payment for it. I don't think it's unreasonable to propose that.
Yeah, because frankly, she's making enough interest for this township to be able to do something like that.
It is, but there's an opportunity, because anything that you spend on one thing, you can't spend on something else. Alright, any, any other discussion from the board on this?
This is current, right?
Correct, that is correct, correct. Yep.
Yep. You already went through the highest. I already, I already. Oh, I mean, I mean, I guess it sounds all right, but I don't, I don't necessarily like that. Supervisor could deny you just because, maybe kind of thing, yeah, like that. I do like what you're proposing, changing that, take for you.
Yes.
Yeah, I already got that, that's reasonable.
To make it allowed automatically?
Automatically, yes, yes.
Did we, again, ask the dumb question? Because like, yeah, don't have one, I don't know. Do you get a license or certificate or?
You get a card that you carry in your wallet?
Okay. Can we ask to have those, or is that?
I do not know the technical legal rules, and if we can keep those on file. But we could have something like it's allowed, but then you sign a form like you were talking about acknowledging, like something like that is, is possible.
Doesn't just need to make sure they have something through.
Yeah, and I contacted the insurance about it as far as liability goes, and he wrote me a long answer. That said, you know, it's being, it's being worked out. There's no, no simple and straightforward answer, is essentially what it came down to.
You should get a constitutional carry resolution instead of a CPL resolution, that's my opinion.
Well, and we'll have public comments in just a minute. But anything else from the board on that? Otherwise, we'll move on to our second public comment. Alright, perfect. Moving on to our second public comments. If anyone wants to speak on anything about anything, feel free to come up to the lecture. Let us know who you are, let us know what you think. Are we? Feel free to call me.
I'm constitutional. What, Christie, look in there? I don't, I don't need to live in this township. We in the Second Amendment are right, and I don't, I'm, I'm not, I'm just walking in here, I didn't read this packet yet. I don't understand what we got going on here, Jeffrey.
So the current employee handbook has a policy. It's in, I scanned this one into the packet on carrying concealed weapons or open carrying as a staff member or an employee of the township. And so I was looking at.
Who allows us to do that?
Yeah, I was looking at.
So what are you looking at doing?
I was looking at easy enough from where the current policy is.
Oh, not as strict?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
My proposal is for making it not as strict, you know. My proposal is for making it not as strict, you know.
Except for something about supervisor position or supervisor permission.
Currently it has that you need to.
You're all elected. You're all equal. You don't have any authority over any of the others.
But we're not talking about these people. All right, and so.
From people and men.
Right, other employees. And so currently it reads that you need permission from the supervisor.
Oh, currently reads you need permission.
And my proposal is that it would be automatic that you have permission unless there's. But it's just a discussion at this one. Good. All right. Anything else? Anyone else on anything? Any board comment on anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Noah, do you have support? Support by Lee. Any discussion among the board? There are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.